Okay, ZBA, we are live, we are recording, phone lines are open, you are good to go.
Thank you, Matt, and welcome everybody to the Town of East Hampton zoning board of appeals meeting for April 5th, 2022. We are starting live once again. Nice to be in present with everybody. Once again, I'm going to see what we can do to boost our ratings after mostly two years off as we go along. We're going to start off with our first hearing tonight, and that is the applicant is Peter T. Quinn at 128 Essex Street in Montauk Suffolk tax map number 300-28-5-45.4. Size and location is 19,434 feet at 128 Essex Street in Montauk Beach Development Corp. Map number 1013 Montauk. The description is to construct 1,302 square foot of first and second story additions, a 224 square foot rear second story balcony, an 88 square foot porch, a 418 square foot front second story balcony, and an upgraded sanitary system on a parcel of land within jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought is a natural resources permit pursuant to 255-440, and seven variances are required. Variances of .6 feet, 8.1 feet, 9.5 feet, and 11.8 feet from 255-430 wetland setbacks are required to allow an outdoor shower 99.4 feet, a second story balcony 91.9 feet, additions to the residence 90.5 feet, and a staircase 88.2 feet from freshwater wetlands where 100 foot is required. A variance of 3 feet from 255-1110 is required to allow the proposed addition to be located 12 feet from the northern side yard property line where 15 feet is required. Two variances of from 255-1172D pyramid regulations are required to allow the proposed addition to be located 6 foot on the north side and 2 foot on the south side beyond relative height restrictions and any other relief necessary from East Hampton Town Code. The zoning district is A2, resident zone X flood zone secret class is type 2. In council, do we have proper affidavit or service of posting?
We do. We have an affidavit reflecting that the mailing and the posting were both done on March 23rd, 2022, and the paperwork appears to be in order.
Okay, thank you. And who's going to do the report?
I've got the report on this one.
Okay.
Laney? Do you have the photos?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you're working it?
It's on.
Yeah, okay.
It's on there.
Yeah, it's on there, okay. I just want to make sure you're ready. This is one of the official notices of posting, for some reason, this applicant put two on the front. They were not there, but they were reposted again relatively early in the week. Next, we'll see the other posting that was placed on the property. Next, you can see the house in the background there up the hill. It's a shot from across the street now, just looking at the applicant's property and wider view. And next, I'm going to go around the house. And now I took a side view. This is the nearest neighbor on the south side of the applicant's property. Next, this is a shot in the neighbor. You can see the house there on the right side to the neighbor, to the immediate north of the applicant's property. And that's looking up north, Essex Street. This is the house immediately across the street from the applicant's house. Next, and that's a shot looking down south on Essex Street, just to give you another view of the street itself. Next, and this is another shot across the street, another homeowner. Part of this was done in the TAM. It says most houses are, or there's a mix, houses are set back off the street. It's really kind of a mix on Essex Street, actually. Next, now I walked across the front yard of the applicant, just took another shot of the house to the north, and you could see the difference in the grade and the sperm. Next, and I turned around just to get another shot down south, and then we're going to walk around the house. Next, a shot and close up of the front and garage, and we're going to go up the steps to the south there. Okay, oh, man, enough for another one. Yeah, it's just a closer. Can you go backwards? Okay, next. Okay, another view again with the house to the north. It's on the north side where the larger pyramid variance is being requested and where the addition is proposed. Next, now in the back, and again, you can just, I have just shot across from south to north on the back part of the property. And as you saw in the TAM, there was a property line modification done on this a number of years ago. Next, so this is the area that was, where the modification was done, and then the area to the east of this is all unimproved property. Next, I'm going to take a number of shots just to give you an idea. The wetlands are down in that vicinity. This is straight back to the east. Next is a shot that, in that dark spot, kind of farther away in the center there, is where the actual wetland is. And next, and now it's a shot of this property and wetlands and vegetation with a little more northerly view and the end of the property. Next, next, another more of that. Now I'm standing at the back of the end of the property and taking a shot of the back of the house and the side, this is on the north side where the addition and the, again, the pyramid variance is being requested. Next, that's another view, a little bit farther down to the west, and another shot of the house next door on the north side. Next, and I think that's just a shot of the, skip that one. Next, and it's the final one. This just gives a view from the upper part by the applicant's house and a view down to Essex Street, and that's it.
Thank you, Terry. Does anybody have any questions for Terry? Okay, applicant, you introduce yourself with, in your address?
Yes, absolutely. Chairman members of the board, for the record, my name is Todd O'Connell. I am the architect for Mr. Quinn, who is with me here this evening in the audience, and I will be representing in my doing business at 1200 Veterans Highway, Hoppock, New York.
Thank you. I'll swear you in. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, proceed.
All right, thank you. What Mr. Quinn is looking to do, as stated by the board, is to build a second floor on their home. The home is pre-existing non-conforming. The home that's there does not meet the setbacks that are as part of the code today, and we're looking to do a vertical addition on this particular home. Unfortunately, going vertical does create a couple challenges in terms of violating the pyramid rule and encroachments on a pyramid, as well as not meeting the required setbacks. The house is already there, so this is not something that we're purposely doing. We're just looking to follow the lines of what's there today. Where, you know, building the second floor will give them the space that he needs for his, for his family. He is, the owner, he is actually the one that will be living there. This is not a rental property, so we feel that what he's requesting will benefit him and his family. To talk to you about a few of the reliefs that are requested, on the northerly side, where is the greatest relief sought, which is for the pyramid, I would like to bring to your attention, as if when you were looking at the pictures, the neighbor's property to the north is actually up on a berm much higher. Where we take that pyramid from is on the bottom of that neighbor's grade. So if I was to be 2 foot over, or let's say a foot onto the neighbor's property, I would actually have about another 5 feet of height on my pyramid. But nonetheless, you know, the house is there. I'm not looking to go closer. The second floor is not a full vertical second floor. It is a gambrel style, so it is a sloped roof style on that side of the home, which we feel will soften, you know, the look on that end of the house and to the neighbor itself. On the southerly side, there is an extremely small pyramid request. Now, part of that is because the grade, as it tapers, it's a very, very low end, so we're taking, you know, a pyramid that starts pretty much at the basement level going up on that side of the house, just because of the way the natural grade falls. We prefer not to, you know, reduce that, but I can make that side conform if the board seemed fit. I would have to reduce the second floor or push it northerly on the southerly part of the house by about 2 feet, and by doing that, it would conform with the pyramid on the southerly side. I spoke with Mr. Quinn about this. He prefers, you know, not to do this. Is he, you know, this is where his main living space is. This is, you know, this is where his entertaining and, and because this is the second floor, which gives some ocean views on that area. So he's really looking to gain as much as he can over the existing footprint of the home on, that's currently there. In addition, this particular home is close to the wetlands. We're not looking to go any closer with the home. The, we're just going vertical, so we don't feel like the home or the addition that we're building will have any effect on the wetlands. But there are certain things that we're putting on the back of the house, such as balconies, an outdoor shower, steps to get up to the balcony. That does have some minimal encroachments into the wetland areas. The shower itself, we're looking to do a 5-foot shower. The reality is I could go 4 foot 6 inches and I will conform with 100-foot setback on the wetland. So we can amend the application that the shower will conform with the, with the 100-foot setback. But the rest, we really can't conform. You know, being that the main living space is on the second floor, we need to have some sort of a balcony and a way down to the grade and be able to use the yard, which is, you know, where he likes to enjoy the space. So it's a very, very important request to have this balconied effect and steps to get down to the first floor. And I would also like to state that this balcony actually sits on top of an existing patio. So we're not penetrating or changing the ground level footprint of where there's currently patio on the house. We're just, you know, building on top of the patio with this balconied space. In addition to their request, there's some facts that we wanted to go over and, you know, to state whether or not this would create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, doing what we're doing will benefit the neighbors, because if I was to try to redevelop this home, let's say knock it down or move it, not only does that create tremendous grade challenges, but it would actually interfere with the neighbor to the north and block their views to the ocean. So keeping the house where it is actually, you know, is a benefit to the, to the surrounding neighbors, as opposed to trying to redevelop it at a different position on the property itself. Nonetheless, the amount of grading and disturbance that would be required to put the house in any other location would be, you know, a tremendous amount of work to do, and I feel it would only cause a larger environmental impact by moving the home, as opposed to building on top of what we currently have. So we really felt that this was the best application to put before you and request this variance. Could we do something else? Yes, we could build a new house, and we can move the house. And, but that's not what we hear about. We, you know, we're concerned about the environment. We're concerned about the neighbor's views. So we feel that this was really the best application to put before the board. You know, the variance itself, the house is there. The additions, you know, we're creating the proposed additions, but the house was there. We didn't put it there. We're just looking to build something without, you know, substantially increasing the footprint of the home and working within the footprint that we have, which has the benefits of not disturbing the ground or very little ground disturbance as opposed to building something brand new. The planning commission had made certain recommendations on this project as conditions, and we have no objection to those conditions. Obviously, we're concerned about runoff and making sure that we keep the runoff on our property. And, you know, they're asking us to put some additional drains in for areas that are pre-existing. But, you know, we have no issue providing that drainage to try to help the community and make sure and ensure that we're going to keep the runoff on our property. And with that all said, I'd love to answer any questions this board may have, and as well, Mr. Quinn is here with me this evening. If you had any questions for him as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, going back to the recommendations of the planning department, you know, the house is pre-existing non-conforming, and they are suggesting that a better fit would be to do a redevelopment of the property. I know that's not what you want to do, and you addressed why not. But, you know, this is also a significant pyramid on the north side in particular, and this board really does not look very favorably on pyramid, pyramid things. This would be increasing a nonconformity on a nonconforming property. You've explained, I guess, why you're not proposing a complete redevelopment of them. But as the planner says, they could locate the residence out of jurisdiction and meet all the zoning.
Yep, I understand what you're saying, but we feel that trying to do a redevelopment would be a detriment to the surrounding community, you know, especially specifically his neighbor. You know, it's, and, you know, and just because of the topography of the property, you know, creates, you know, also a financial hardship. The amount of, you know, cost, you know, compared to what we're proposing here would be a tremendous burden on Mr. Quinn. You know, you're talking about, you know, construction costs that could ultimately be, you know, 50 to possibly even double the cost that he's currently at, as where we then have to do excavation, new driveways, new foundations, you know, and it's just would be a tremendous burden to Mr. Quinn and would be a much larger, in my opinion, detriment to the, not only his property, but the surrounding area as well.
How many bedrooms are you adding?
We're actually not adding, I think we're only adding one bedroom. The second floor that we're building is all open entertaining space. The first floor itself is going to be four bedrooms.
Okay, so you are, but you are going to, you are, see, so one of the things we're going to look at, and what we do look at, is, is whether or not we're, this is the minimum variance, you know, necessary. There's a lot going on here. Does, you know, we have, we have wetlands. We have, it looks like, you know, with the, with the pyramid, it looks like it's a maxing out and going beyond maybe maxing out of the property. So there's a lot going on here that we have to look at. One thing I was noticing in the plan, the garage, the below-grade garage, let me address that a little bit. Is that existing?
That, that's existing. That's already there.
All right, so.
Yeah, you see in the pictures, you'll see a retaining wall and a below entrance garage, and that, that's, that's there currently.
So one thing I think we're going to, I don't know this answer right off the bat. This might be a building department question, but that garage, if you're adding a story, is that a third story on top of it? Because it looks like that garage is 4 foot out of, out of grade, the foundation.
Yeah.
So, so are we adding a third story? And that's one of the things I think we would need a building department interpretation.
Yeah, I could answer that. What a story is classified is the, if, when the average of the house around the entire perimeter is greater than 6 feet above the grade plane. Because it's only that garage area, the average serves to be much less than 6 feet, and therefore is not counted as a story.
I think East Hampton is different. I think it's 4 feet out of grade, but we can, we can find that out.
Yeah. And again, that, that is the side that, to try to diminish the pyramid, that is the one side that even though I add a much lower level, I can make that side meet the pyramid.
So, I mean, the, the property, again, I think, I think there's a lot going on here, but the property is non-conforming. It's been known non-conforming for a long time. There was a prop, there was a lot line modification. That lot line modification is restricted as far as what, what can be done in it. So it does look like a previous zoning boards did try to maybe legalize the property at that time, but restrict it. And, and now we're, we're expanding it to a greater degree. The, the property was bought in 2020, so this is known to the, to the property owner, buyer at the time. So maybe you can address that. I mean, it looks like we're, we're, we're bringing this more than what previous zoning boards have appeared to, to look at it as. And we have to give that deference, right?
I don't have any knowledge of that, but perhaps the Mr. Quinn might, he could speak to that.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, if you could just clarify, you mentioned that on the north side, had you been 2 feet further over, you wouldn't have had a pyramid restriction. I was on the site. I see that, that slope that comes dramatically down from one property to another. Where is the property line there? It's not up on the berm? It's not up on the hill? It's down?
The property line starts right at the bottom of the berm.
Right at the bottom.
Right at the bottom. So that's the area I'm talking about, exactly.
Wasn't quite, it wasn't that easy to understand on site exactly where the property line was. It seemed like.
Yeah, it's at the lowest point of that berm.
It was running right along that berm.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'd like to hear from the planning.
I'd like to hear from the planning department at that time. Laney? Thank you. Thank you. And you'll have a chance to, to redress, and if the, if Mr. Quinn wants to address, he can. Laney, do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Okay, so this parcel was subject of a lot line modification that was finalized in 2018. So previously, the lot had ended right at the rear of the property, right at the rear of the house. So it was very nonconforming. It's less nonconforming than it had previously been. And the existing improvements on the parcel were constructed prior to modern zoning. And, yeah, the existing residence is pre-existing nonconforming to side yard and, and wetland setbacks as well. The wetlands associated with the subject property are to the east, and they are extensive. Although they are sloped, they are sloped downhill from the subject property as well, so that's something to consider. It appears that if they, they could redesign the second story to alleviate some of these variances, it is something that, you know, the planning department needs to look at when considering options for properties with variances. And also, yes, a complete redevelopment of this property could situate the, the residence outside of NRSP jurisdiction entirely. However, there would be a significant amount of regrading. It, it slopes down significantly to Essex Street, so that is something to consider. A lot of the houses, the older houses on the east side of Essex Street are situated in the rear of the property. That's kind of the, the character of the neighborhood in that area. However, as things change and things get more developed, we are seeing development closer to the road. But it would take a considerable amount of grading in order to do that. And, yeah, that is one thing that we, the planning department was looking for was, there, there doesn't appear to be drainage in the driveway. It is a paved driveway. They're not proposing to do anything there. However, dry wells to catch runoff from, you know, just, just from leaving the property would probably have a very big impact in this area, since it is so greatly sloped down towards Essex Street. If the board has any questions?
Laney, in, in the additions, say, all right, the applicant here is proposing additions to the house where it is. In your mind, if that's the case, do you feel that we are looking at the minimum that variance is necessary in this scenario?
It appears that, you know, additions towards the, the front of the residence would be, you know, away from the wetlands and away from the side yards could be possible, but it would have to be, you know, redesigned by the applicant.
Laney, were there any suggestions made by the planning department as to what might be done in remediation here to compensate for what they've been requesting? I mean, it's a fully cleared lot. It was stated by the applicant that it's pre-existing nonconforming. But when we look at this, if we were to consider this and move forward, are there any suggestions that have come a factor from the planning board about how we might look to improve the natural condition on the property?
As far as natural conditions, I mean, we, we always like to see, you know, revegees and buffers. They are not that substantial variances from the wetland setbacks. The wetlands are kind of far off the property. However, you know, they're, they are requesting those variances there, and there is room. The area, this area, as part of the, the lot line modification, it was stated that, you know, nothing could be constructed in that area. So that, if that is something the board was considering for, you know, revegetation, something like that, the applicant could speak to that. But it, it would be beneficial to the wetlands.
It's just that I was at the site, and as I mentioned before, and the grade change from the back of the applicant's property to the area that contains the wetlands, that back lot, that undeveloped area, is pretty significant. And it's also significant on the house that's directly to the north. So I was wondering if that ever came across here to think that, well, there's a way in which we can create a little buffer right down on that property line to help us with any potential movement. Now, most of it is moving in the opposite direction of the greatest point, very dramatically to Essex. So your point about drainage is really well taken, and I think it's a good one, because anything we can do to help the flooding on Essex is something we're looking for. But at the rear of it, and I realize there's not a lot to work with there in terms of what they have, but I was concerned about, not concerned, I was interested to know whether or not that had been something the planning had looked at and thought, well, there is a way in which maybe a buffer would help us as a separator. This is separate of any consideration we're having about the pyramid law. I'm just wondering what you had in mind with that, if there was anything came across the planning at this point.
Yeah, it, the, since the wetland setbacks are not that great, the, the variances that they're requesting were not that great. We weren't suggesting a buffer. However, a buffer is always beneficial to the wetlands, and especially because it does slope down towards the wetlands. That is something that, you know, would definitely be beneficial to catch any runoff, especially from an outdoor shower or something like that. That would be beneficial.
Thank you.
But it also has alternatives, going back to the redevelopment. Yes, large pyramid on the north.
Anybody have any questions for Laney?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, did you want to address the?
No, no, you're welcome to.
State your name and your address.
Peter Quinn, 128 Essex Street, Montauk, New York.
Thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
To touch on a couple of things, I was aware of the lot line modification when we purchased the house, prior to purchasing it. The prior owner didn't realize that his property line ended 4 feet beyond the house when he went to sell it, so he went through a long process to get that. So we knew we couldn't develop that, and we're not proposing any development into the lot line at all. That's not being touched. I guess the shower, as Todd mentioned, will, I have no problem with that going back to 4 and 1/2 feet to get rid of that request. From the beginning of this, my, my wife and I just wanted to be good neighbors. We spoke to the neighbors on both sides. We showed them the renderings, and we know that we can go forward. It would be more money, but it would also, we've got advice from builders that it's a better way to go. You can build a new house, because once we start doing development, rip that roof off, we don't know what we're going to find, what it's going to cost to fix whatever's back there. It's almost 100 years old. So with that, though, you'll, you see the pictures, it's a much bigger job, and it's really going to be out of place, and it's going to impact my neighbor, especially to the north. We take over, we, we take over his view. We don't ask for any variances. We can do it. I know we can do it legally, but I don't want to do that. And, you know, this is the house we want to live in, you know, for the rest of our lives. This has been a dream of ours to purchase a house out here. And the way it sits right now, we have 7-foot ceilings. And there's no, that's what their ceilings are on the first floor. It doesn't, it doesn't fit. I'm one of 7 children. I'm one of seven children. It doesn't work. We have on every weekend, there are eight to 10 of us out there sleeping on top of one another. But we tried to do this with as least impact as possible staying in that footprint. And knowing that if it got denied, then okay, we go with plan B, which is going to be more, absolutely more expensive. And it's going to, it's going to look like the house across the street now, which only get, we've been there for two years now. I've only seen those homeowners twice. No one lives there. It's going to be a McMansion close to the street and out of place. And I wouldn't be a good neighbor. I have no problem doing a buffer to the wetlands. There's not a requirement that we do the dry wells. I have no problem doing the dry wells. I've been Laney's phone friend for the last 18 months, calling her every two weeks saying, what can, what can we do to make this work here? I want to be a good neighbor and make it work. But I really don't want to knock it down, but if that's our only option, you know, we'll do that to get the space.
I don't think we're telling you that's the only option. I think even in this scenario, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you're concerned and we do look at character of the neighborhood as well. So, you know, that is important to us. The issue that we're going to grapple with, and I'll tell you this right now, is that because it's a nonconforming lot, East Hampton in 255 111 talks about orderly growth. And we have to take a look at the amount of expansion you're doing on this house is whether or not on a nonconforming lot, whether or not that's going to set a precedent that is going to, you know, we're going to wrestle with that as a board and we're going to look at that. It seems to me off, right off the bat, that it's a big ask, especially in pyramid. There's not many pyramid variances that we grant. Most of them usually have to do with houses in floodplain zones where the elevation of the house is raised. So because of FEMA, but so anyway, just.
As Todd mentioned earlier, if that berm is working against me, because if that berm.
But that's an existing condition.
Yeah, no, I'm not complaining. I mean, it's just, it is what it is.
Your lot is your lot.
As far as, I mean, the lot coverage that's allowed, we can, we can build without a variance, a much larger house. That's not what we're looking for here. We really just want to maximize what we can with that existing footprint. And we don't, we're not recommending, we're not asking for anything outside the footprint.
But as a board, one of the standards for a variance that we have to look at is, is it the minimum necessary? And if you have the ability to make the second story smaller, which would reduce the variances, how would you address that to this board?
We would do that on the, we can do it on the, on the one side, on the south side. We can do that, no problem. It wouldn't, aesthetically, it would look ridiculous. It would be a, it would be a chop and then up and over. It wouldn't, it just wouldn't work. And we're already piercing the pyramid as the house sits now. The way it sits right now, we'd still, we're piercing that. But as far, like Todd said, if we lose 18 inches.
House now, it pierces it.
It does. As it sits, it pierces it.
Laney, do you have that, that drawing of the pyramid?
I know, but again, it's still, we're increasing the nonconformity. And that's the, that's the thing, again, we're going to wrestle with.
Okay.
That's the closer neighbor also impacting that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a few final comments on the, on the home itself. Just from a practical standpoint, this house sits so far back on the property where, you know, if it was much closer, the reality is this house would probably feel closer to the property line and tighter, but because the setback works to the advantage in terms of the aesthetics of the home from the street curb appeal, which is an important thing to consider as we're worried about, you know, can character along the street and the neighborhood. So we're looking to, you know, a lot of the homes are setback and we're looking to, and because it's setback, it actually softens the blow of any side yard relief or any pyramid reliefs that we would request. To try to go ahead and go outside the footprint, which would be the only way possible to compensate for additional square footage, again, I feel would be, you know, more of an impact on the neighbors, you know, and possibly even the view of the neighbor directly to the north because we would only be able to go forward of the house. And that's where, where, you know, he spoke with the neighbor. He had no issue with what we're trying to propose here. Moving forward would potentially block his view. You know, as he sits just slightly in front of Mr. Quinn's home. So we feel that really this was the best application to put before you. We can't just eliminate that section of it. Because as Peter had mentioned, it would be a horrible aesthetic on a home because I couldn't touch that side of the house then. And I couldn't go vertical until pretty much the center of that first gambrel. That square footage alone would, you know, we'd have to compensate by building out forward. There would be no other way to recapture that square footage. So, you know, the construction would be a lot more. We feel it would have a larger impact on the neighbor. And, you know, it's aesthetically, I'd be extremely concerned because the existing house already sits where it is. And we're looking to go with a very, you know, classic look. We're not, you know, looking, you know, to create something that's out of the ordinary. We're looking for something that will meet the character of the neighborhood. And we feel that it was the best proposal to put before this board, but nonetheless, I understand what all your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
LTV, do we, I mean, do we have anybody? It doesn't look like we have anybody in the audience, public here. Do we have anybody in public on, online?
You have zero callers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, Terry, you want to make a motion? And we are hearing is close, would be close this evening.
So for the application of Peter Quinn at 128 Essex Street in Montauk, tax map 300 dash 028 dash 05 dash 45 dot four, make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
I'll second it.
I concur.
And I concur as well. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. How you doing, Rick? We, our next hearing is Michael Carranza at 421 Sag Harbor Turnpike. Nope, no, that's the wrong one. Henry Proto. Almost an April Fool's on you, Rick. Henry Proto at 835 Montauk Highway in Montauk Suffolk, tax map number 300 dash 52 dash 1 dash 10.3. The size and location is 20,649 square feet at 835 Montauk Highway, Montauk Beach Development Core, Montauk, map number 1013 in Montauk. The description is to allow a stone staircase, rock wall and gravel to remain with 100 foot of wetlands. We sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255 420 and three variances from 255 430 wetland setbacks. Variances of 47 feet, 50 feet and 50 feet are required to allow existing staircases, 53 feet and existing gravel area, 50 feet and existing rock wall, 50 feet from the wetlands where 100 foot is required and any other relief necessary from East Hampton Town Code. Zoning District is B Residence, Zone X, Blood Zone, Secret Class is Type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yes, again, we have an affidavit of service and posting reflecting that the mailing and the posting were done on February 14th, 2022, and paperwork appears to be in order.
Thank you. I believe our presentation is with member Johan, so go ahead and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proto is of the posting of the sign that's on a tree down at the roadside on 27, next. Here I'm looking, you can see the community church across the way. I'm looking east on 27, next. Here I've turned and looked back towards the village, back towards the village. You can see the village there in the distance and the Catholic church off to your left, next. Here I'm coming in the driveway and approaching the house. We can see that coming in, this is a, you can't see here, but this is driveway shared by a house that's also slightly to the east, next. This is the beginning, you see the beginning of a retaining wall that has something to do with the staircase we're going to discuss. And we see some of the native stone wall that now is going to progress up beyond the stairs and around the back of the house and off to the west. Thank you, next. I'm standing at the slight distance and you get a pretty good idea. You can see the left-hand corner, that's the corner of the existing house. And the staircase in question is in front of us. We see a Seren planters and we can see that stone wall, that native stone wall, natural stone wall that's slightly behind what has been done there to create the staircase, next. This is a close up of looking up the stairwell. We see what's going on here in terms of their relationship to the house. I can see the house to my left with the downspout. I'm looking at the planters and looking at the steps. And then of course to our right there, we have a wall that margins this particular portion of the construction, next. This is just to show the character of the material being used. I know we've seen in a previous one, but you see it's substantial. It's done in a very professional and finished manner, next. The stairs, now I'm standing directly, I'm going to make my way up again, a substantial set of stairs, next. Just another angle looking at it and you see what it looks like as you approach it from in front of the garage, next. Now I'm standing at the top of the stairs and looking towards the backyard. You're getting to see the stone that's been lined up there that there was a requirement we saw in the TAM that some margin was made between the wetlands and the development. And that's the line along the maximum clearing line that they ran this stone, next. Now I'm standing, I've gone a little bit further and it's important to note here that this is a large gravelled area that exists. It's between the house and the stone wall as it progresses towards the rear. Next, by the way, before we move, there's some air conditioning units that you see there that have been highlighted and discussed over there. So we come around back. Now we're going to get back to where there's a covered patio porch area that's attached, of course, as part of the house, but we're going to progress our way beyond the house, off to the west, next. Now I'm standing back at the corner of the house. You can see it to my left and I'm looking out over a large area that's gravelled, an area that was created between the house and a retaining wall that was made of native stone in this area, next. I'm standing now off of the developed area, looking back at this wall. You can see the house in the distance is a gravelled area. This is substantial amount of material that was needed to create this wall, to create the platform above that's gravelled, next. This is now, I'm standing on a wall that was permitted with the house. This is a wall that was described, I believe, in Mr. Whalen's note as they'd be having been erected to help contain the septic system, the sanitary system. That was all a legal part of the original building permit. But beyond it, we see a mass of stone and you get an idea of the exact depth that they're working with here to hold up that material that's beyond, which is all now gravelled. So that gives you an idea of the scope of what's under discussion, next.
Last one.
That's the next one. Thank you very much, Laney.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Okay, good evening. Good to see everybody in person again. Richard Whalen, attorney for the applicant, who is Henry Proto. I did submit photographs of my own, but I have to say that member Johan did a very comprehensive photographic, you know, review. So I might even have to go back, maybe if need be, we could refer to some of those photos, but I think that definitely did cover the territory. If you haven't been to the property, though, I do think in some of my comments, I think it is actually helpful to see what was built and how it's actually, how things are actually functioning. One of the note, I just want to make note for the record, the posting sign actually did come down off that tree, believe it or not. I had to repost the property over the weekend, so if you were to go out there today, hopefully it's still there. Now it's on a stake. So remember, the first time we were notified for hearing, the stake blew down. So I tried the tree, that didn't work and so I restaked it. Anyway, so this property got a natural resources special permit, variances from the zoning board in 2016 to build the house that's there today. And if you look at the survey that was approved and the survey of the completed construction, pretty much the applicant did what they were approved to do. The clearing line is pretty much spot on, the house and the covered terrace area, the septic are all positioned precisely as they were on the zoning board's approval. But one thing that wasn't accounted for at the time and exists today is the ground both to the south and to the north of the house is much higher than the parking area where you come in. So the applicant built stairs, not only on the north side, but it hasn't been mentioned, also on the south side of the house. He says, he told me that he had his designer talk to the building department before that, before that permit was issued. And the building department said, you're okay, you can go ahead and do that. That's not the advice I would have given. I mean, if I was asked in advance, which I wasn't, I would have said, I think that this at least requires a modification from the zoning board. That's what I think he should have done. And, you know, I apologize on Mr. Proto's behalf for not coming back to the board originally. I think he should have done that. But that was the advice that his designer of the stairway was given. The building department was on the property during the construction. At no time did they raise any concerns about the stairs, which were obviously there. So the concerns when this property was first developed, there were only three main issues. There was obviously the direct disturbance of land. There was the potential septic impact on wetlands, we're not 150 feet from the wetlands. And finally, there was the potential stormwater runoff into the wetlands. In terms of the disturbance, again, the applicant built pretty much exactly what he was allowed to do, cleared and graded what was allowed to do. The percentage of clearing is 41.9%. That means almost 60% of the lot, and it's not a very big lot, it's a half acre lot. Almost 60% of lot is and will remain natural. Probably a slightly higher percentage because on Walsh's survey, he actually goes into the grade cut into the, there is a, let me point to it on that, there's a little hill in that area. And so there's some stone wall at the foot of that, but that hill over time, it just beyond the stone wall, that's going to grow up and become natural too. So I would say at the end of the day, 60% of this lot will remain natural. The back of the lot, the north side is a very, very nice wetland. I would even say that's a high quality wetland, even though it's shared among five house lots and a vacant lot. It's really, looks like it's in good shape, very natural, very, very beautiful wetland. And it joins, you know, as I said, goes over, I think there were five lots, five or six lots that share that. So the land drops down, from where the house is built, the land drops down rather steeply. I guess it's an elevation drop of about 20 feet. Going from the north side of the house and the gravel area around the house. And what you will find, and this is one reason I submitted my photos, but as you go from east to west, from the stairs and then back in the property, this is what happens. So on where the stairs are, again, the original approval did not deal with that. If you, I went back and looked at the original survey and it shows, it had one foot topography. So, you know, you could tell there was going to be a five or six foot grade there. And, you know, neither the applicant nor the board, nor the planning department, nor frankly, the attorney, who was me, really said, what's going to happen there? If it had been left alone, I imagine we'd have a very, very steep grassy slope. So what the applicant did, they built stairs. I explained the process of how he got to do that, but with the stairs, he put in a retaining wall, which you can see on the right-hand side of the stairs, you know, very clearly on member Johan's surveys, I mean, photos, that retaining wall is preventing in the eastern, northeastern part of the property, that prevents any runoff down into the wetlands. It basically takes any stormwater down into the driveway, into the driveway parking area, which has a, you know, which has a drainage gate and a dry well. When you go further back to where the, beyond the top of the stairs, the land to the right of the gravel actually rises slightly and rises more the further to the. and rises more the further to the west you go, to the point where there's little, that little cut into the face of the hill. So no water can run in that direction. I've been on the property, you know, a couple of times recently. If you walk on the property and you go and see everything to the right of his retaining wall and that stone, the course of stone that we'll talk about is all natural. You don't see any soil erosion, there's no sedimentation, there is no stormwater runoff running in that direction. What's there right now is protecting the wetland. If the board were to remove, require removal of the stairs, I'm not sure what happens then because you're going to have a grade that will come down and some of it will pitch to the north. In any event, those were the issues at the time, the main concerns. I think that, again, if you visit the property and actually look at what's going on, there's no stormwater runoff to the, no stormwater impact to the wetlands to the north. There are several little individual elements of the application, I just want to hit them in turn. And I want to save the gravel for last. The gravel was not applied for, it's in the hearing notice, it's not something that we applied for. And I want to save that till last because I think it's maybe the most interesting part of the application. So again, the stone stairs, the applicant hired designer to design it. I know the name of the firm, but I won't say that unless you want me to. They supposedly talked to the building department, were told it was okay to build this, they went ahead and did it. Again, I wouldn't have advised that, but that's what happened. The, right now, the, if you, could we actually go back to that? Can we just show one of the photos of the earlier photos that?
Lainey, Lainey Gunn, skip.
I have your photos too, if you want.
Okay, well, actually Ed's were pretty good, so the first ones are towards the stairs. He took a lot of photos of the stairs. Yeah, probably maybe one more, so you can kind of see, I'll pull out, yeah, one more. He hasn't pulled out one further, one more. So you can see now, the course of stone continues out into the driveway area and there's a little berm, maybe a foot or two high. So when you're there, any stormwater coming pitching down from the gravel above and down the stairs is going to run into the gravel driveway, which is pitched somewhere around here, is a drainage grade into a storm basin. I think simply my, you know, my argument with regard to the stairs is they weren't approved properly. I think that was obviously a factor in the board's decision when you last discussed this. But if you look at it rationally, it's not really harming anything. And if you take it away, you know, we don't know that there won't be some impacts in terms of, you know, where future stormwater runs to. In terms of the stone walls, could we go to just further up into the backyard there? Okay, that's good, thank you. There's a propane tank covered here. There's also a very, that other small thing is a drainage grate. There are pipes from that grate that go into the back part, the western part of the gravel area. And there's a buried stormwater basin there as well. So all that area drains. I've talked to Henry as to why he used gravel. So when they first installed, well, let me talk with the gravel, deal with the gravel last. In terms of the stone, first of all, on the right, that's a single course of native field stone. It's not cemented together, it's not, it's not cemented, it's not stacked. I don't think that's even a structure, to be honest with you. And it's pretty apparent, and I think you can see this, it has no effect on anything, if you could even consider it to be a wall. Plenty of people around East Hampton put down stones to mark the edge of a walkway or a garden or something like that. So it's really, as you probably know from reading the materials, the D E C had to give a freshwater wetlands permit to this. They originally had required a fence. The applicant through a prior representative communicated with the D E C and said, well, can we just delineate the border of our clearing with stone? They said, okay, that's what I'm told, I have not dealt directly with the D E C. So that's really all it is, delineating the edge of the clearing. And you will see, if you visit the property and even from the photograph, everything on the north side of the stone is left untouched, it's all native.
That's at that point, but eventually this wall.
Right, so further back.
Retaining wall.
Right, so as you go a little bit further back, and I don't know if we have a closer photo of that or not. No, the direction. Well, that's, I guess that's good enough.
It's there, that's where it's.
Yeah, it's, there, it's sort of acting as a retaining wall. I mean, I will concede that part is probably a wall.
Required quite a bit of regrading from the original.
Yeah, because they cut, they cut into the hill, but that is the original clearing line. That's the original clearing and grading line on the original approval. You look at the original survey.
Not cut into the, well, that part of the hill, but on the other side of the house, the northwest side was the peak of the hill. So they filled in a lot of, they filled in a lot of.
To the west they filled. So there's, I mean, there's really three stone areas here, this is very confusing. And one of the reasons that I advise my client, we have to come back and get this straightened out, is we have that single course of stone. I'm not sure whether the board can consider that a wall or not. We have the wall that's stacked where that hill is cut into. And then if you want to go forward, Ed's last photo or two. You can stop there or there. So this kind of accentuates it, it's not quite as dramatic, obviously, you've got somebody standing in the background, it's not. The concrete wall in the foreground is, I think, about maximum height, about six feet off the grade, six feet above grade. But yes, there was fill placed in that area and that stone, that if you call that a stone, not sure what it was. It's again, more or less dumped there, but that's, that is holding back the area that was filled in. We are proposing to revegetate roughly from towards that corner back. So we would revegetate towards the top of that wall and then kind of curving around where the other, where the stone in the rear is, where that person is standing. So that would be, that would not become lawn, it would be, the gravel would be removed and it would be revegetated with a mix of blueberry and some native grasses. And I forget, there was some other third.
The original survey also called, the approved survey also called for a dry well in that location. If you remember, the reason why there was a lot of discussion with the neighbors to the west and flooding of their properties, so you know that.
Henry, I asked, and Henry says that there is a buried dry well in that area. It's not shown on the survey, I assume because the surveyor couldn't see it. But he tells me that that small grate near the propane cap leads to a buried dry well in that area. If we had to demonstrate that through contractors invoices or something, I could do that, I suppose. But I'm told that there is a dry well there. So that is, those are the walls, again, nothing is, you know, the rear area back where you cut into the bank, it's really almost more aesthetic than anything else. I guess if you took the stone away there, it wouldn't have a great deal of impact on the bank. I don't think the bank there is that steep I'm talking about in the rear. Obviously, the bank going down here to the west, that would be a problem if you remove that stone. The last thing before I talk about the gravel is also there'll be a, on the, on this concrete retaining wall in the foreground, and also parallel to Montauk Highway. Because of the height there, the building department requires a four-foot tall fence. We are showing that on the plan, I don't know that you care that much about that. But we will be, we will be installing a safety retaining fence along the edge of the concrete. The last thing is the gravel. So we didn't apply for any relief concerning the gravel, the gravel yard, I'll call it. And when this was reviewed the last time around by the board, it didn't come up at all. Gravel yards are not that, they're not that common, but they're not that uncommon in the town. One place they seem to be particularly popular over the years has always been Colloden Shores. So I estimate you probably have one or 200, maybe more residential lots in this town, who knows? I might be greatly underestimating, where people have used at least part of their yacht, well, their yard with gravel. And now it's been a long time since I was the zoning board attorney and I realize policy may have changed since that time. But as far as I know, the building department still treats a gravel yard as though it's just a yard. They don't change the coverage figures on your CFO, on your survey. It's one of those in-between things, you know, when I was zoning board attorney counsel, a couple of times we dealt with that, people came before us. And pretty much what we just did is we just looked the other way. No one has really directly addressed that issue. The planning department is saying, well, we think that that gravel is a structure. So before you jump in both feet with that, what I have to say about that is there are a number of properties in the town. I'll guess 100 to 200, but could be more than that, where people already have those yards. It was certainly fairly commonplace in Colloden Shores. So if those are treated retroactively as structures, all those people, that's all existing coverage. There are, there are properties in Colloden that are 100% gravel around the house. Those people have 100% lot coverage. They can swap out that lot coverage for something else. But they could put in a, you know, they could put in a patio, put in a deck. Obviously, if they put in a building with a roof on it, that contributes to building coverage. Pools and pool decks have different setbacks. But you don't, I think you want to be very careful how you deal with that. And it might be that the best way to deal with that issue, if the town decides it wants to, is through legislation. And I bring that to the town board, let the town board.
But there's a, this might help you out a little bit. There was a previous determination already by the zoning board and the construction of this house with a clearing limit, right?
Right.
So this, if this conforms to that clearing limit, there was no revegetation required from that?
No, we did not have a revegetation plan.
This structure here, which is substantial, it would be good for us to seek some mitigation, you know, in terms of maybe some revege that you're talking about.
Well, we are. I think our revegetation plan would revegetate about 40% of the gravel area. And we do have a plan that's been submitted. All I'm saying is, you know, the planning department is suggesting, well, gee, that's a structure. Again, be careful about that because it's not, you know, that, as far as I know, it's not been the town's policy. And I'm not here to advocate for gravel yards, it's not my cup of tea. But they do exist around town, if the town retroactively says, hey, those are all structures. Everyone who's got one, and there are a number of properties out there, that's coverage, that's pre-existing coverage. And you can translate it or convert it to something else. So that's my only caveat of that. It certainly wasn't prohibited in this lot, we didn't show what we were going to do. As I said, I was beginning to say before, I talked to Henry about it. There are a couple of reasons why he did it. One is that when they first completed the construction, they found that that back area was very wet and muddy. And, you know, he just didn't think it was going to be suitable for a lawn. The other thing is directly north of the house, it's a two-story house and on your north side of the house is very dark, very shady. And I think you'd have a lot of trouble getting grass to grow there. So, you know, gravel is what was used and we would like to retain, except for what we're proposing to revegetate, we would like to retain that.
Yeah, but an issue here is not really the gravel per se. It's the idea that that wall that turned from the north that was allowed by the D E C then turned and headed south and margin the, the one we had the photo of that I had taken, it margins along the west property line, showing property line. And that's a substantial structure that was put in place without permission by any previous zoning board here. Any of the previous determinations did not allow for that. Later, after that structure's in place, Phil comes in there, retains a natural grade and we put gravel on top. The discussion of the gravel is a legitimate discussion. A second discussion is, what is that wall doing there without permission that was brought around on the west side? And it creates a large platform, one that can be used for entertaining and recreation, we understand why he did it. The question is, it was never previously approved. And by the way, although I was not part of the planning of the Z B A at the time, this is a property that was discussed at length. And it took quite a bit of an effort to come up with an arrangement that allowed the house to be built. At no time was that wall part of that original determination. So I think that the wall that runs down that was then spec, that you point out that the D E C allowed you to do in lieu of something else. And it does correctly, as you say, on the north side. Delineates, and we see what's going on there, how it, as you say, it has not washed away. That's an issue when it comes to me, is that that was something that could be allowed. When we turn the corner and we create a real structure, we fill in behind the structure, we create a platform, we cover it with gravel. Gravel alone is not the issue. Discussing whether or not gravel is allowed in the town is one thing. You were not, you were never given the permission, the landowner, of course. The applicant was never put in a position where he would have been allowed to put that wall in without returning to this board for some sort of permission to keep moving forward there. That's the issue I have looking at the wall. I don't know how the wall gets put there without any feeling that there should have been some sort of return to the board, get permission, and then go back and erect the wall. So that changed the natural grade. And as far as I know, I was not part of the board, so I don't want to speak for them. But we can read, we can read the determination. The permission was to have the house built as it has been built. But beyond that, natural grade should have been respected. And in this case, it was changed significantly. So that's a problem for me.
I think the issue is, I understand what Member Johan is saying here. I don't think the issue so much is the wall as there was fill put back there. It was not, the original approval, if you look at the 2016 approval, it shows a area of disturbance. The applicant has adhered to the area of disturbance. What wasn't clear, the applicant didn't clearly apply for it, you certainly didn't prohibit it, was the change in the grade. There was originally a fairly steep slope on the west side where the house is today. And you can see that looking at the original topography. So yes, fill was put into that area, once you put in fill, you have to retain it. Much of that area in terms of the applicant being able to use it for outdoor recreation, we're not going to be able to do that because we're proposing to revegetate it naturally. I guess about half of the, roughly half of the distance between the outdoor terrace and the property line, or actually between the top of that wall, is proposed to be revegetated. So, and as I said, and then, you know, we're retaining more on the north side. So if you look at our revegetation plan, I understand, we're getting the benefit, or we got a benefit from creating a plateau, if you will, west of the house. We're giving back without having to go and excavate, which would be a major project. We're willing to revegetate, return that to a natural condition. So we won't get the benefit of that. And I think the question for you is, is that, you know, is that a sufficient mitigation? But I completely understand, Ed, where you're coming from.
Thank you. I, no, I'm going to go ahead and ask you about the stairs. Well, I mean, we're also here about the stairs. And so we have the same basic issue, and that is that there was an approval. At no time was that staircase a part of a previous approval. And it now is in place and it is significant. I took those number of photos to demonstrate that it's not a casual effort that was made there. That was a serious effort. Obviously, there was drawings, obviously, there was planning, obviously, it took a serious amount of time. Nonetheless, that was done somehow intentionally beyond the previous determination approvals. I think you have to address why we think we would be willing to say that that significant structure should be allowed there when the previous determination did not allow for it.
So let me do that. A factor that the board can take into consideration in granting or denying the variance is whether it was a self-imposed hardship. I don't dispute that. This was a self-imposed hardship because the applicant did it without coming and getting prior board approval. If you look at though, if we take that away and let's say the applicant did come before you today to build what you see today. Is there a reason to deny it? It's 57 feet from the wetlands, true, the house isn't much further than that. It's a non-polluting structure, it doesn't do anything really directly to damage the wetlands. It is within the area that was approved for clearing. They did not go beyond their clearing boundary to install that. There is sort of a logical need to figure out how you get up. If you have, look, the back of the house was always pretty much level where it is right now. You have to get up outside, I mean, you've got to get around the house. So you've got to get up the outside of the house. If you don't have stairs, you're going to have a steep bank. And that's the other alternative, that would be the natural grade. I think the stairs are better than that because it's not subject to erosion, somebody doesn't have to clamber up and down the bank or slide down it. It does give safe access to the rear of the house. If for some reason you had to exit the house and couldn't come out the garage, you can come down there. And finally, it, not only does it not adversely impact the wetlands, as I said, it produces no pollution. It's not outside the original street area. But with the retaining wall that was built, it does control stormwater runoff. All stormwater runoff from the north side of the house and that gravel area is coming down the stairs and is going into the drainage basin in the driveway. And if you see the property and you walk it, you realize that is what's happening. So my argument basically is that there's no adverse environmental impact. And there is a benefit to the applicant, there's a convenience benefit to it. And the alternative is not better.
One of the things I would say, you made the point that would we have turned down this stairs if it had been approached? Well, none of us can speak to that right now. We'd have to, there's a process here and that process is, proposals are made by applicants, they're reviewed by the board. Sometimes suggestions and modifications happen, sometimes you come back in front of the board, a give and take happens. Whether a staircase would have been approved, this particular one or another one, we don't know. What we are dealing with is a very large staircase that was put in without approvals. And we, I don't want to speculate on what a previous board would have done, or what we would have done if it was presented to us. The fact that there's a process here and that process was totally ignored. And that's something we have to deal with when we're considering this application.
What I'm saying though, then, is you have to look at it as though the stairs weren't there. We don't get, obviously, we get no benefit from the stairs having been built because we don't have permits from you for it. But if you look at the, you know, in a sense, you have the ability to now see what the stairs would look like if they were built because they're there. The question would be, if somebody come to you and said, all right, we built the house, we can't get to the backyard very easily, we got this steep slope. house, we can't get to the backyard very easily, we got this steep slope over here, can we put in stairs? Honestly, I do think you probably would, and I'm not talking about the prior board, I'm talking about you, because you guys have to make that decision. I think logically, you probably would say, all right, it's a reasonable request. That's how I view it. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask for after the fact, and it's not harming anything. But I, you know, I understand, we had, Ed, I know where you're coming from, it's, would have been a lot easier had this been part of the original approval.
And it's not just stairs, um, you know, there's planters next to those stairs, you know, to, if you want to speculate on. It was, it was much more intentional.
The, I, I think that, that the, the other point here, I know we didn't mention the company, we know it's a local company, and we know they've been mentioned, they've done this before a number of times, somebody should get to them and tell them that they'd better check their, their, their allowance, what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do. Um, because that's not, this is, this is a substantial change from, um, what was previously approved. That's, I think that's what.
As, as I said, my advice would have been, you need at least a modification to the permit for that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
You said you were the attorney on the twenty sixteen project?
I, I was the attorney, yes. This, the stairs never, they were not part of that project, never came up. We never addressed anything about how to, how to get to the, you know, from the driveway to the, to the, to the yard around the house.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Um, anybody in the public, I guess, oh, we were.
Should we, there's a scenic easement, I see on the survey. You're offering a scenic easement, Rick? Rick, the applicant's offering a scenic easement?
Yeah, we got to go to.
Um, no, we weren't, we weren't offering a scenic easement, we were offering to revegetate in that area.
The scenic easement.
The scenic easement exists.
Oh, the scenic easement.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Yeah, so I'm sure it's been, I believe it's been granted. Yeah, that scenic easement should have been granted.
Part of the original survey.
Oh, it's part of the original, right, okay.
I think we go to Lenny at this point. I didn't hear the buzzer go off, but that went free law.
Good evening. Um, yeah, so I, I won't add too much more to it. Um, I'll just state that, um, as far as the gravel area, it should have been noticed in the twenty twenty-one, um, or twenty twenty application. Um, we have had a, a few, um, applications in the last few years that have applied for gravel areas from wetland setbacks, um, which is why it was included in this, and it should have been included previously, it was just overlooked. Um, so that, that's one thing that, um, that, you know, it was no change to the, um, the property itself, um, it's just something that should have been included that now is. Um, and the, the planning department has been reviewing gravel areas, um, for wetland setback variances, um, on many other applications throughout, throughout the town for the past couple of years at, at least, and I'm not that familiar, um, previously before that. Um, so, yeah, they are proposing to revegetate a portion of the area. Um, it was clear, this, this whole area is within the, um, the boards allowed clearing, um, area to be cleared. Um, and it is within that gravel area there, and you can see it on the survey. Um, and so the main difference between this application and the, um, the previous application in twenty twenty-one, um, January of twenty twenty-one, which, um, the board had denied, um, is the proposed mitigation in the form of the vegetative buffer to, um, and the buffer, um, would alleviate what were some concerns that were brought up, um, in the hearing in the twenty twenty-one denial. Um, and they did submit a revegetation plan that I have on the computer, but, um, yeah, and so the, the majority of the planning department's objection to the twenty sixteen proposal, um, was regarding, you know, the excavation and construction, um, for structures in close, such close proximity to these wetlands, which are, um, you know, substantial wetlands. Um, and it was brought up in the twenty sixteen, um, technical analysis that there is a perched water table on this property, um, that created unique difficulties, um, you know, with construction on the lot. I mean, the residence is already built, um, and these are all existing improvements. So that's something that is not really in play here, but it is something that was brought up in the, um, the twenty sixteen, um, application of the property and something that the board considered at the time. Um, and, yeah, and runoff leaving, leaving the property was a major concern in the twenty sixteen approval of the, of the residence, um, both onto Montauk Highway and, um, into the wetlands. So that's something that the board was very concerned about at that time, and, um, you know, it's, as far as this application should be concerned as well. Any questions?
No, anybody have any questions?
I do not, no.
No, thank you. Um, doesn't appear there's anybody in the public here. Matt, is there anybody online?
You have zero callers, thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair, would you like to?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we do have one person that just called in, if you'd like I can unmute them.
Sure.
Okay, last four digits, three, three, five, four, let me unmute you.
Hello caller?
Okay, you are live.
Kathleen.
Are you?
Hello?
Yes, who's this?
Kathleen Beckman.
Can you, can you please turn off the back? Hello, can you please turn off the background TV or whatever you got going there because there's an echo? All right, can you?
I just muted it. Is that okay?
Okay, it sounds, yeah, it's better. Please, please announce yourself.
Yes, Kathleen Beckman.
And where do you reside?
Um, I'm at, uh, sixty-four South S X Street in Montauk.
Okay. Um, can I, I'm going to have to swear you in, do you affirm, or do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, proceed.
Hi, I am the neighbor to, directly to the west, uh, properties about each other, and, um, so, uh, my concern is over the last three years, because of, uh, the runoff when we have storms, has created a lot of moss growing in my gardens and in the grass. And, um, uh, it's affected my home, and, um, I think it's because of those rock walls and even the retaining wall for the septic. Um, and, um, I'm hoping that it maybe just, uh, when they added the rock wall, it created, because it was always, um, a rise there, um, and, but when they added the rock walls, I think it creates more of a runoff, especially during, uh, rain.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, I think there's nobody else there. Matt, you want to confirm?
Uh, there's zero additional callers, thank you.
Thank you, um, so I'm just going to, um, of course, the Vice Chair, when he makes his motion now, um, I believe we have to wait for the transcript to post, now that there's somebody the remote. So we've been, we had this, council, you want to? Uh, we can't close the record tonight now, now because somebody dialed in, Rick, we have to wait. I'm not sure. It's one of those areas we have to navigate.
Um, just Richard Ray Allen again for the, uh, for the applicant. Um, if the record doesn't close, then maybe it gives us a chance to go and consider, I mean, I know where Kathy Beckman lives, she's, you know, she's right downhill there. Um, I know there's something that we can do, we might, I'll talk to my.
I would like, I think, I would advise you to verify that there's a drywell there. I don't know what you got to do to verify there's a drywell. I think you should verify there's a drywell there.
Okay. Okay, and if there is, then I just will have to consider whether there's something else that we could do, um, to deal with, you know, we don't want any water running onto the neighbor's property.
Yeah.
Totally understand that.
Yeah, we're not in the position of describing what should or shouldn't be done, but.
We'd have to come back and.
There is a drywell there on the, on the original, uh, determination, and then we, we should verify that.
Yeah. Right, so I'll do that. Where are we with the record closure then, do we know?
So we're going to, we're going to go to two weeks after it's posted to the.
Same, the same as previously. Okay, all right, so that we can then comment during that two-week period. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, in the matter of Henry Proto at eight thirty-five Montauk Highway, Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map, three hundred dash fifty-two dash one dash ten point three, want to make a motion that we close the public hearing portion of this review, but leave the, leave the record open to, to, for two weeks, until two weeks after the transcript is posted on the town website.
I concur.
And I concur as well, thank you, Rick. Our next hearing is Michael Carraza at four twenty-one Sag Harbor Turnpike in East Hampton, Suffolk Tax Map number three hundred dash one fifty-six dash five dash ten point three. Um, the size and location is a hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred fifty-nine square feet at four twenty-one Sag Harbor Turnpike, East Hampton. The description is to allow an existing swimming pool patio to remain within side yard setbacks and to allow a six hundred square foot poolhouse to remain on the parcel. Relief sought is one variance of two fifty-five, eleven, ten dimensional setbacks of eight point four feet is required to allow an existing swimming pool patio to remain thirty-eight point four feet from the side yard lot line where fifty feet is required. One variance of two fifty-five, eleven, twenty-three. Limitations on accessory buildings. It's required to allow six hundred square foot poolhouse to remain on a parcel where two hundred square foot is required, and any other relief necessary from East Hampton Town Code. Northern District is A three residence, zone X flood zone, secret class type two. Council, do we have an affidavit of service and posting?
We sure do, we have an affidavit of service and posting reflecting the mailing and the posting were both done on the twenty fourth of March twenty twenty-two, and the paperwork appears to be in order.
Thank you, and I think we have Mrs. Carraza here for the applicant. Oh, yeah, we're going to have a report, no, it's me. Um, I was there today, this is a posting on the, on a tree. Um, Lenny, if you can go to the next photo, there you go. So this, this is a, as you drive up, this is coming into the driveway, but as you drive up, there is, you'll see on the survey, there are a number of drywells, how many? So driveways, I, six driveways that are part of a right-of-way coming up. One, they're all shared by one narrow driveway, but just know that there is a, there's six driveways coming along that you drive into. Um, this is a photo entering the, uh, the site. Next photo. So this is the, this is the, uh, photo of the house beyond, uh, and to the gates. And it goes through the gates. All right, so now I'm inside the property, I'm going to walk around the, uh, I'll call it the left side of the house to enter the backyard. Now I'm in the backyard, um, you are looking at, in the front of the photo, let me just pull up here, hold on a second, just to make sure. The front of the photo, the corner to the left side here is, is the variance requested of the corner of the patio to the side yard. And that is the point of the property that is abutting the, the driveway right-of-ways. And beyond that is the poolhouse that is in question. Um, and you can see the poolhouse is, is consisted of two with an open, partially open space in between it. Go ahead, next quest, next photo. Uh, just photo of the, of the pool area. Next. This is a poolhouse that is in question, you have, actually, it looks like, you know, two sections on either side that are acting as a poolhouse, this is, um, and then you have the center, which is a covered area. This is the point, I think, from the first time we had this hearing, is when we discovered that this was, might have been an issue with town, um, exceeding the poolhouse, uh, coverage. Do want to point out that there wasn't a, a building permit given for this poolhouse. Next. And then going back and taking a look at the house, um, from the other side where we're sitting by the poolhouse. That's it? Mr. Carraza, introduce yourself.
Um, Michael Carraza, I'm the homeowner.
Raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, for having me back, and I think live for the first time. Um, last time I was here was August seventeenth of last year, um, and we discussed, um, the issue about the, the patio setback. Um, I don't know that we need to go through the whole thing, you've already highlighted uh, this, uh, when the, the pool was built, uh, we minded the setbacks, I think it was an oversight that the doubling of the setbacks applied to the patio as well as the pool, and the designer and the mason didn't know that, uh, and they went, um, too far. Um, nobody had ever even thought about it because the purpose of the setbacks is to make sure that you maintain quiet, quiet and peace for neighboring properties. Um, in this particular case, there are six inezements that border the property line that is in question, and through those inezement, there's a paved active driveway. So the actual property that is across from me, it's actually a hundred and sixty-five feet. Um, that may not be a reason not to have known this upfront. If we did, we would have easily just pulled the patio back, we just didn't know it was an oversight, but I don't think, from our opinion, it, it causes any disturbance, and I know all the neighbors and, uh, and nobody feels that there's a concern. Um, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to address them, but I don't think there's, there's much more to cover on.
No, I think we should go over to the poolhouse, you know, address the poolhouse part of it.
Yeah, so the poolhouse issue was a surprise that came, um, to my attention at, at last year's hearing, I didn't know about this, um, and I still am perplexed by it to some degree. We actually followed what I think is a very responsible process. We came up with a set of designs, um, with my architect, we approached the building department, we let them know what we were thinking about building with this concept of taking the two hundred square foot poolhouse limitation and breaking it into two components, and then separating it with a common roof. Um, we put it in front of the building department, they looked at it, they made some recommendations, and we applied those recommendations into the plans and then submitted the plans, and they accepted, signed off, and issued a permit. In addition, during its construction, they came and inspected and improved all the interim inspections that were required, and no one ever raised an issue, and we followed the plans. And what is built there today is what was submitted and permitted by the town that incorporated their input before the permit was issued. So years later, to find out that all of a sudden this is in compliance with the building department is very perplexing. We were referred to Article eleven of the two fifty-five code, chapter code, and I've read it many times, and even today, there's nothing in the code that says that that can't be built. Having said that, if it's the board's determination that they want to look at this structure as a six hundred, uh, square foot poolhouse versus a two hundred square foot poolhouse with a six hundred accessory structure, I, I don't have an issue with that, I don't understand it, but at the end of the day, it may not matter if this is what the board would like and wants to issue a variance for that. Um, I guess that's fine with me.
Any other questions?
Not immediately, no.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, I'm looking at the letter, so, the letter that, uh, we, the board had sent to the building inspector, who says that at the time of the inspection, the poolhouse was open all the way through.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, I, I tried to avoid that because on the nineteenth of August, two days after, that's the letter I got. And what I did, the moment I got that, I sent back all the interim, um, photographs from the digging, the excavation, the septic, the foundation, the framing, the electrical, all the way through. And I said, I don't know how you can say I took the back wall down after it was built, here are all the interim pictures, and here are all the interim permit, inspections that were done. And then the board, um, wrote back an email and said, sorry, we, um, we, it was a mistake, we understand that the wall, uh, was built, it was permitted for, and it was built in duration, and they, they kind of went back on that.
I mean, I think, I believe we have a copy of the, uh, Lenny, and the existing conditions, well, yeah. Well, yeah, the drawings that are in the existing conditions, is that the building permit set?
There's there's only ever been one set. There was never any revisions to the plans. And it was built exactly to the plans.
Well, the photos that were in the existing conditions are dated March.
Okay. Everybody else have any questions?
That the set of drawings you're looking at, these approved building department drawings were from two thousand and sixteen?
That's correct. Just to explain the the years, this whole home and and property was a redevelopment and it was done in three phases with the pool house being phase one. But because we started phase two before phase one was done, they wouldn't let us close out that permit. And when we started phase three, same thing with phase two and phase one. So to date, all three phases have been complete for well over a year now. I think it was December of twenty twenty when it was completed, but all permits remain open because of this issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laney?
Okay, good evening. So, yeah, I don't have too much to add on this. The first hearing was August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and the record was left open so that the applicant could apply for the variance for the pool house. There there was a building permit which shows the plans for the pool house built exactly as it is. That was issued in error. And that, you know, it's it's built exactly as the as the plans suggested. In regards to the side yard variance, you know, it's very well screened as you saw in the photos. And there are those six driveways in between this property and the adjacent property. The planning department doesn't hold very strong opinions on this.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Laney?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Therefore, I'll close this out. Public, yes. Matt, is there anybody online?
Zero callers. Thank you.
Thank you. Therefore, I make a motion in the case of Michael Carranza, four twenty-one Sag Harbor Turnpike in East Hampton Suffolk Task Map number three hundred dash one fifty-six dash five dash ten point three to close the public hearing and the public record.
I second.
I concur.
I concur.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carranza. Right, Laney is still up. We have a possible administrative application this evening. I'll read that in. John Nicholas at sixteen Mudford Avenue in East Hampton Suffolk Task Map number three hundred dash thirty-eight dash zero seven dash fifteen. And the description is to construct eight thousand four hundred square foot of floating rafts for oyster cultivation within Three Mile Harbor.
Okay, so this is a possible admin. I have the survey up on the screen. So they are proposing to they have currently have dock space in the area and they are currently proposing to construct to go into the oyster farming business and construct oyster rafts. It is something that does require natural resources special permit. They will be placing the the rafts into the water, but the dock is already there, so they're not going to be doing any major construction. And I believe they do all already have a trustee permit for this as well.
And they're getting they're not going to have the boat boats there. So this is going to be replacing the the boats?
Yes.
Are they going to use that area where the boat slips are or they're gonna do it like it's contained on the survey?
I believe, yeah, it's just just where it is on the survey.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't.
I don't have a problem with this going administrative either, so. Yeah. So this is Springs. I think, remember Denise.
Remember Denise? Where's my info? Oh, where is it? Oh, wait, it's at the end. In the matter of the administrative application for John Nicholas, sixteen Mudford Avenue, East Hampton Suffolk County, Task Map number three hundred dash thirty-eight dash seven dash fifteen, I make a motion for this to be be eligible to go administratively.
I second that.
I'll concur. And I concur as well. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into our work session now and we're gonna be discussing some post hearing decisions. I'll read the first one into the record. I believe we have Member Brenneman is not here this evening. He has sent in his his recommendation in writing, his decision in writing, and I think we're gonna have counsel read that into record once we read that in. So in the case of Jeff Wieland or Wieland, one seventy Marine Boulevard Hampton Dunes Amagansett Suffolk Task Map number three hundred dash one seventy-six dash zero four dash twelve. The size and location is fifteen thousand zero zero two square feet at one seventy million Boulevard Hampton Dunes Lot forty-nine, map forty-six ninety-four Amagansett. The description is to construct an approximately seven hundred and forty square foot second story addition, solar panels and existing on the existing roof, repair an existing shed, repair an existing fence with new gates, replace the existing front porch and an upgraded sanitary system within jurisdiction and setbacks of freshwater wetlands, dune land and beach vegetation. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five four twenty of the East Hampton Town Code and one variance is required for this application. One variance of thirty-nine foot is required from two fifty-five four thirty of the Town Code in order to construct a second story addition sixty-one feet from freshwater wetlands where a hundred foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. Zoning district is B residence AE flood zone elevation ten feet, secret class is type two. Counsel, do you want to read that? Tim's in.
Would you like Tim's comments? So Mr. Brenneman's comments on this application are as follows, and this writing will also be entered into the record. This application to add seven hundred and forty square feet, second story over already improved floor. It's also a panel on the existing roof, repair existing shed, repair existing fence with new gates, repair existing front porch, and upgrade sanitary system. Acknowledging a relief requested is an NRSP plus one variance of thirty-nine feet to wetland setbacks. Member Brenneman says this application has modified at the hearing meets both the NRSP and area variance standards. The environmental conditions on the property will improve after the existing lawn is removed and replaced with sand. The existing easement, the vegetation is completed, the Rosa Regosa is removed from the existing vegetation and the existing vegetation is increased as proposed in the January twentieth twenty twenty-two plan. With regard to the variance, while thirty-nine percent variance is substantial, the addition is over existing improvements. The improvements trigger a new IA septic, which is not mitigation, but is nonetheless also an environmental improvement. For the following, for the preceding reasons, I approve this application.
Thank you. Terry?
Okay, I'll make some more comments. Now, we did have this hearing and discussion. Karen Murphy was the attorney. Yes, they did bring up the new IA system, the wetlands, the back, the grass that was in the back of the house that they were going to make all sand at the north side and the southeast part of the property. And they also propose an additional five hundred and sixty feet of vegetation to be added. There will be no grass, as Member Brenneman mentioned, the Rosa Regosa was removed from the scenic easement. And the as stated also that the the extension of the home is going to be on the second story and is over already improved area. There was, I just want to bring this up. The there was a neighbor that called during the hearing because there was an early document apparently in this file or at the application start that showed a pool going in at the property. And it was stated by Ms. Murphy, the attorney for the applicant, that that was removed from from the plan. And I just want to make that statement now. I too am looking to approve it. I think it is a good project with the environmental improvements, the increased buffer and going to some of the sand and revegetation that's offered, I think will improve the natural natural resources and the but does meet natural resources standards and that the the IA system also will improve the environmental standards on the property. Back to him, looking to approve it. I think it meets the conditions of both for both the variance and the natural resources standards.
Thank you.
This is an area that's populated by a number of cottage style homes. One of the NRSP standards addresses reduced size and protection of natural resources. The overall square footage and the adage that gets very is getting very close to the maximum allowable on this property, and that is precedent setting. The area is comprised of similarly sized lots, many of which are near wetlands, most of which contain protected beach vegetation. It is not an appropriate level of development for Beach Hampton, looking at the maximum GFA standards and the fifty percent expansion for this parcel because it's close proximity to the wetlands in the front of the property, which is what propels it for variance. For the following reasons, I do not feel this meets the standards for either an NRSP or variance. The lot area is not sufficient or adequate for the proposed use. The proposed use is not suitable for the location. The proposed use is not in keeping with the neighborhood and community, particularly with regard to the mass and scope of the project. And proposed construction is not in compliance with two fifty-five four ten of the Town Code for protection of the town's beaches, dunes, bluffs, wetland, marshes, and other coastal resources. If the house was, no, develop, no, have, and also it was brought up in the meeting that the development would have an impact on the runoff. So for these reasons, I don't feel it meets the standard and I'm denying this application.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of those along the lines of what was just said by Member Savary. I was taken aback by the second floor addition here and the massing and the size of the structure. And I asked whether or not it fit in with the look of the houses in the neighborhood. Does it affect the character of the neighborhood in a serious manner? And will it be a net negative in terms of how it impacts that that general area? And I think that's a real consideration. It is something that I I spent some time thinking about when I was considering what decision to make here. I will say, however, that I don't feel as if it's been a degrading a degradation of the environment in the improvements and the 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 compromises were offered by the applicant. I do think that the revedge plan and the fact that that lawn at the back of the house, which we all became very aware of, was to be removed and go back to sand. I know that the sanitary system is not a a is offered up as a way of compensating because it would have been called for, but nonetheless, it is a net improvement. There is the notion that what is being done overall here to me has not done anything to more seriously degrade it. I was taken again by that notion of the character of the neighborhood. And all through these houses down in this area, we have to ask ourselves that on a regular basis when we see larger houses going than what smaller ones were. However, I agree with the comments of Members Brenneman and Berger. And then I think in terms of a net result here, I think it's a net positive. I I didn't find that under two fifty-five dash eight dash fifty that the unnecessary change of character had a serious effect on the neighborhood. And then NRSP standard of two fifty-five five dash fifty-one, that the reservation natural resources was not seriously degraded by the proposal of the project. So therefore, I'm going to I'm going to side with the Members Brenneman and Berger and I'm going to look to approve this application.
Thank you. I do. When you look at properties like this and and you look at the areas where it is the dune land, beach vegetation and stuff is very significant here, I think I would agree with my members for approval. I think that the addition is being over is being completed over the existing footprint. They're not they're not increasing the footprint at all. I think it overall does offset by the by their mitigating factors of restoring this property back to more of a of a beach landscape. So therefore, that, you know, I'll also vote to approve this application.
Just like to make a comment that I forgot earlier, actually, also. Yes, it is getting close to being maxed out. I agree with that. However, I I am approving it. I was also in terms of the cottage style, this is an older house that has been there. And I think it, even with the addition, it is still in keeping with the character of neighborhood. And they are also putting solar panels on the roof, which may not be a specific standard, but that's also a good thing.
Thank you.
So I'll take that as mitigation.
Thank you. Counsel, you good?
Yes, thank you.
So next we have Bunker Bay Real Estate Holdings LLC, located at thirty-two Bayview Avenue in Amagansett Suffolk Task Map number three hundred dash one zero six dash zero one dash twenty-five point one. The size and location is nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-seven square feet, eighteen thousand total, eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-seven square feet, excluding wetlands, thirty-two Bayview Avenue, the Holly Mare Section C map number three sixteen in Amagansett. The description is to construct a two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight square foot of residence with a forty square foot porch, sanitary system, driveways, walkway and driveway on a parcel of land that contains freshwater wetlands. A natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five four twenty and three variances from two fifty-five four thirty wetland setbacks. Variances of forty feet, thirty-six feet and three feet are required for the construction of a split rail fence, sixty feet, a driveway sixty-four feet and a walkway ninety-seven feet from a freshwater wetland where a hundred foot is required. And a variance of thirty-five feet is required for the construction of sanitary system to be located one fifteen hundred and fifteen feet from a freshwater wetland where a hundred and fifty is required. Two variances of two fifty-five eleven seventy-two D pyramid regulations of thirteen feet and five point five feet from the southeastern property line and northeastern property line respectively, and any other relief necessary from East Hampton Town Code. Zoning district is A residence AE flood zone elevation ten and a secret class is type two. Counsel, would you like to read Member Brenneman's?
They will repeat the application description because Chairman said it very clearly into the record. We'll go straight into Member Brenneman's comments, which are as follows. This is a wooded vacant lot and slopes from the south to the north. The application proposes to construct a modular home in the most conforming portion of the lot. The applicant is agreeable to create a significant scenic easement as proposed by the planning department. The easement will cover between one third and one half of the property and add protection to the wetlands. The application meets both the NRSP and our variance standards. The improvements are being positioned on uplands. As mentioned, the property is sloped and the applicant proposed to build on the most conforming part of the property, which mitigates NRSP impacts and the wetland setbacks, but creates pyramid variances. Meanwhile, the pyramid variances are in the southern portion of the property and are mitigated by Hollywood Avenue, a paper road not in use, which creates further separation to the neighboring property to the south. Additionally, a portion of the residence will be in flood zone AE dash. Additionally, a portion of the residence will be in flood zone AE-10, triggering elevation requirements. The split rail fence, as testified by the applicant, was required by the DEC, parentheses, presumably to mark the northernmost part of the improvements, closed, parentheses. In short, the applicant is constructing improvements in the best place possible on this property, and the scenic easement is significant mitigation. And for those reasons, I am approving this application.
Thank you.
Sorry, Terry? Or you want to go?
Yep, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As usual, member Brenneman covered most of the things we might want to say here. I think that the, the parcel is exactly as described, a wooded parcel, and that we do have to the north, the wetlands that are, are in conversation and what we have to worry about in terms of setbacks. I think that the fence has been described by member Brenneman as having been required by the DEC, and that's one of the variants that was looked for. Additionally, there was a comment in the TAM that had the driveway been of a pervious material, that it would be removed, that, that variance, and the applicant has approved, has agreed to that. So that's a second variance that was requested that would be removed. The third one for the walkway is a three-foot variance 97 feet away. And it, it's pretty much set, I think, if we look at the, we look at the, the survey on this, it's set about as far away from you can from the wetlands and still get access to the house in a successful manner. So in those three variances, I think that what was done by the, by the applicant here in trying to compensate for what, as was pointed out with the easement and in the location of the most conforming location for the house is important. However, it was mentioned earlier in a previous discussion this evening, we take pyramid violations and pyramid requests very seriously here. And this is, this is a fairly sizable period request, pyramid request. I do think however, that as was pointed out again by member Brenneman, the Hollywood Avenue is, it has an effect on this, that this parcel is divided from a neighboring parcel by a paper road, which will not be developed and does provide an additional buffer. And that the alternative of moving the house further from the property to the north would then of course necessitate moving closer to the wetlands. Moving it closer to the wetlands is also something we try not to encourage. So we have a house here and a project that has been moved as far possible away from the wetlands, but has triggered a need for a variance for pyramid. I will repeat what was said earlier today by, by the chair on a previous one, that this is one of the most serious things that we look at. We don't want to see creating pyramid violations as any kind of regular occurrence, and in many cases, we will not approve them. However, given the conditions on this particular property, given how the lot lays out and at the best building spot for the house, and that it is a reasonable house in terms of size, and that I think that the fact that it's modular will do less than possible disturbance in its construction, I'm looking to approve the application at this time.
Thank you. Denise?
I agree with member Johann. The improvements are on the upland portion of the property. I did think a lot about the pyramid variance, but Hollywood Road is an unopened road to be abandoned, and the subject property appears to have acquired the northern half of that I do think that the lot area is sufficient for the proposed use. I think that the proposed use is suitable for the location. The proposed use is in keeping with the neighborhood and the community. And for these reasons, I approve this application.
Thank you. I also agree and thank the board. Just want to point out, there was some confusion during the hearing about, about the pyramid law and the drawings, and it turns out that we didn't have the right drawings. So, and, and the applicant actually stated that when, when the original pyramid, he did redesign the house to more of a Cape Cod to do it. But I agree with the pyramid, approving the pyramid in this case due to the uniqueness of this property relative to Hollywood Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, so do I get a turn?
I got to go to member Burger.
Go for it. Sorry. Thank you, Roy. Thank you for that. Okay. All right. Well, you, you covered pretty much everything. I was concerned, my biggest dilemma was the pyramid variance. And I know about Hollywood Avenue, but there are times that paper roads have, you know, been unpapered, or whatever you want to call it, used for other things. But the applicant has, I guess, abandoned the northern portion. I don't know if he's acquired it yet. I wasn't clear on that part, but, um, so, but I do like the scenic easement. You know, the variances were, again, going back to the driveway, the change to the pervious driveway and all the other mitigation, particularly the scenic easement. And just as an aside comment, we had one caller on this project, Joe Karpinski, who calls in on many of our calls, and he actually stated that he believes that this project will be done, as the applicant has stated it will be done. And I think in this case, in this case, I think a lot of credence to, to what he says. He, you know, we know he doesn't want to overdevelop Bayview Avenue, and none of us do.
And I think the special circumstance with the pyramid variance is the situation with Hollywood.
Yeah.
Sort of, you know, because, you know, it's a very substantial variance, but it's not really going to loom over a neighboring property or create any other problem.
And it's also part, you know, this theme of the grading changed, it wasn't.
So that's a special circumstance.
Of course, yeah. It's the uniqueness of this particular pyramid.
Thank you. Our next is Stephanie Pietrino Monaco at 154th Road, Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map Number Size and location is 1,987 square foot at 154th Road, Unit 808, Montauk Shores Condominium map number 55 Montauk. This description is to remove an existing mobile home, deck, wood, walkway and shed, and install a new 736 square foot mobile home, 539 square foot deck, 15 square foot outdoor shower, 63 square foot shed, and 192 square foot stone paving on a parcel of land within 150 foot of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-440, and seven variances are required. Two variances of 19.5 feet and 13.5 feet from 255-11, 10 dimensional setbacks is required to construct the deck 10.5 feet and a mobile home 16.5 feet from the side yard property line where 30 foot is required. Five variances of 255-430 wetland setbacks, variances of 87.7 feet, 87.9 feet, 86.4 feet, 54.5 feet, and 87 feet are required to construct a mobile home 19.3 feet, deck 12.1 foot, outdoor shower 13.6 feet, shed 45.5 feet, and stone paving 13 feet from a wetland where 100 foot is required, and any other relief necessary from East Hampton Town Code. Zoning district is RS Resort Zone, X flood zone, secret class is type two.
Terry, was this yours?
No, this is not. I give Mr. Chair. The, my fellow board members will remember that the meeting for this, the public hearing for this was held on January 11th, 2022. The survey we worked from was dated March 31st, 2022. This is.
Twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2020. Let me correct that, that the survey was dated March 31st, 2020. This is a, a unique case for us. There'll be others to come before us, there've been some before. This is in the trailer park in Montauk. The seven variances are triggered largely because, some of them are caused by natural resource, because they're up against wetlands, but also there's no way that this would not trigger variances, given the location and how they are set. The, what the applicant is asking for here is to replace an existing trailer with a new trailer. It was read into the record. And when you visit the site, and at the time of the hearing, we had multiple photos showing how close properties are one to another, and we all understand how that works in a trailer park. There are considerations going forward that the trailer park may come under a series of reviews and what, how those communities will be treated in the future. And there's a, a prop, there's a proposal moving forward to upgrade the entire sewage system within the trailer park. Until that is done, it'll be hard to hold any of these other houses to a higher standard and any of these trailers to higher standard until we see what happens with the septic. The, there were several comments in the TAM, I thought, which were appropriate here. And it says that while variances appear substantial, the fact that the allotted space for the unit allows for very little ability for the application, the applicant to meet any of these setbacks, both dimensional and wetlands. And that the, the fact that the, the complex, the Montauk Shores condominium complex was erected prior to the adoption of zoning, and this whole complex will likely in the necessarily in the future have to be a, a subject to additional environmental conditions as the, the future and the future planning within this community is reconsidered. It's a, it's, it's hard to sit here and say that seven variances are not a problem for the board, but in this case here, we're looking to replace a trailer with one that's similar in kind. So what they're asking for is to upgrade their home. They're not moving in a direction, one direction or another, changing things here, and that is substantially a one-for-one replacement. With that being the case, I don't see a, a serious reason to consider this to be a problem granting the NRSP. I do want to make note that this is as far east on the line of trailers, and so it borders up immediately to town land, and that's both sensitive land, why it's owned by the town, and land that has to be respected. And we, we made note of that in the hearing, that any work moving forward would have to be carefully watched in terms of building protocols and processed as the job moves forward. But having said that, I'm, I'm prepared to approve this. I think that the trailer park as a whole is something that'll be discussed by this board and other boards in the future, but for right now, I believe that the proposal is a fair one, and I think it's a, a reasonable application. I'm, I'm willing to approve this application at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Member Burger?
We got it this time.
I, I don't have that much more to say about this. We have had some other applications at the condominiums. The variances are huge, and they are, five of them relate to the set, the wetland setbacks. But again, it's fixed. The property, the size of the parcel that this is on is 1,987 square feet. They can't possibly do almost anything at all without requiring huge variances. And the only other comment, I, I too am looking to approve this, but the only other comment I wanted to make relative to some of the variances and the large size of the, the setbacks is that this, the side yard variances are double in this area because the Montauk Shores condominium is zoned in a resort zone, which requires multiple side yard variances, they're doubled side yard variances. Now, I too am looking to approve this application.
Thank you. Member Savarys?
I agree with my board members. The proposed improvements are the minimum needed to meet the goal of the applicants and will not approach any closer to the wetlands than what's already there. Since this unit was constructed prior to the adoption of zoning and the condominium alots only a certain amount of space for each unit, the applicant really had no other option than to request these variances from side yard and from wetlands. So for those reasons, I feel it meets the standards and I approve this application.
Thank you. Counsel, did member Brenneman write on this one?
He did. His comments are brief. Do you want them now?
I should.
From member Brenneman, this board is very familiar with the Montauk Shores condominium complex, which was erected prior to the adoption of zoning. Due to the double-sided setbacks for structures on parcels within the resort zone that are adjacent to residential zoning, applicants have no options but to request variances. The applicant proposes to replace an existing mobile home with a new one, and the application meets both NRSP and variance standards. The configuration is such that there are no options but to request variances, and as a result, I approve this application.
Thank you. And I agree with my fellow board members. I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Next, we have Mohammed Grimah at 425 Cranberry Hole Road, Amagansett, Suffolk Tax Map Number The size and location is 54,325 square foot, total 425 Cranberry Hole Road, Cherry Point Lot 1, map number 11091 in Amagansett. The description is to construct a 3,926 square foot total, two-story residence, 876 square foot pool, spa, 697 square foot of first floor decks, 881 square foot of covered first floor decks, 741 square foot of second story covered deck, 367 square foot of second story deck, 583 square foot of roof deck, 73 square foot covered entryway, walkway, driveway, and sanitary system on a parcel of land containing beach vegetation, dune, and tidal wetlands. A natural resources special permit pursuant to section 255-420 of the East Hampton Town Code and any other relief necessary. Zoning district is a residence AE flood zone, elevation 10, secret class is type two. Counsel, it might be prudent to read member Brenneman's decision into the record.
Sure, at this point.
Member Venonan? Yeah, yeah, it's, it doesn't matter. It's fine.
Oh, you handle this. Yeah, let's get him in. You can go first.
No, I, I. Denise stands up. We can hear what Tim said.
Yeah, let's read it.
Sure. The application has been modified and Eastham planning letter dated February 8th, 2022, as most elements of the project have been reduced or scaled back. The relief requested is the NRSP. This is a large undeveloped lot consisting of dune land. The lot has some disturbance related to a driveway to the fish factory, but otherwise contains all the importance associated with this important natural resource. It is a two-lot subdivision totaling 7.8 acres of property. The lot backs up to an existing scenic easement protecting Napeig Bay. The board raised a number of issues during the public hearing, and to the applicant's credit, the issues were addressed in the February 8th, 2022 letter and corresponding attachments. As mentioned, virtually every element of this project was altered, if very slightly in some cases, to answer and address the board's concerns. Reduction in GFA and coverage setbacks from the dune crest, relocation of the IA septic system, reduced limits of clearing, combined with the increase in the scenic easement, were impactful in my decision. The planning department raised the issue of erosion, and specifically the potential for future erosion in this area, and that remains a great concern. However, I find this application now meets the NRSP standards. We are compelled to apply to this decision. The size of the project has been reduced, the improvements are upland and significantly set back from Napeig Bay when compared to neighboring properties, and the scenic easement provides mitigation for the improvements. For these reasons, I approve this application.
Thank you. Member Savarys?
So we'll give a little background. It's been a while ago. This is a vacant lot relatively uncleared, with the exception of a driveway. The eastern end of this property is the lowest elevation being three feet. Natural vegetation exists throughout this undisturbed lot. The dune crest line, which was flagged by the planning department on April 9th, is depicted on the survey, which we are using, last revised August 13th, 2021. Septic system will be located on the western end of the property, and there is an osprey nest to the south, which is on state-owned property, and it's 100 feet southeast of the subject property. This parcel overlooks Napeig Bay. Brian Locasio represented the applicant, and during his presentation, he did address the concerns in the TAM over the current and historic erosion that took place. And he took all this into consideration when putting together the project. The proposed location of the house is in, in large part due to the low grading and access point, and if shifted back further, it would create the need for variances, pyramid, and height. This is Mr. Locasio's testimony. This is Mr. Locasio's testimony. The attorney acknowledged that the site has experienced erosion over the years and added, and I quote, "All waterfront sites are gonna continue to experience erosion, and this board will continue to process these applications." I found this statement to be very, very telling. It really makes us realize, and Mr. Locasio, I have to say, is absolutely correct. We do, with sea level rising, we have to be very mindful of the appropriate expansion in coastal areas. Katie Ozeki, agent for the applicant, addressed elevation and grading issues. Board members expressed concerns over erosion in the last 20 years, since in that time, the adjacent property built in 2001 lost 37 feet. And how to mitigate that has to be clearly defined. There is plenty of evidence of the erosion that has taken place, and concern was expressed about what this parcel will look like in another 10 years. Approving a house of this size in this kind of vulnerable position needs a fine eye and scrutiny. Other board members expressed concern over the location of the pool and its close proximity to the dune crest, very close to needing a variance, and concern also for the natural resources preservation of the dune vegetation. The TAM also recommended placing the house at the lowest elevation in order to create less disturbance in the dune crest area while also preserving the vegetation that is there. The scope and size of this project on this parcel is a concern because of the volatility of this area and its chronic, all the time. The northern part of the lot is on Napeague Bay, which is a New York State significant habitat. Unimproved areas are characterized by rolling dunes and sensitive species of vegetation and wildlife habitat. Development along Cranberry Hole Road should be closely scrutinized and monitored because the shoreline on the north side is one of the most dynamic areas in the town. The dune crest, which was initially flagged in 2000, and since that time, there was a loss on the west of 63 feet, and on the east, a loss of 70 feet of shoreline. Tyler Borzac also testified that the area is battered throughout seasonal storms and will continue to increase in both intensity and frequency due to climate change. One of the NRSP standards addresses reduced size and the protection of resources. Reducing the size of the residence and relocating the proposed residence and observing a larger setback to the dune crest is an alternative, especially when we are well aware of the vulnerabilities of the area. Relocating the residence would also decrease the amount of clearing required, which contains high-quality dune land vegetation across this entire parcel. Therefore, these are the reasons I feel this is not meeting the standard, and I'm going to deny this application because the lot is not sufficient or adequate for the proposed use. The proposed use is not suitable for the location. The proposed use is not in keeping with the neighborhood and community, particularly with regard to the mass and scope of the project. The natural characteristics of the site are such that the proposed construction will cause undue disturbance or disruption to important natural features and have a significant negative impact. Proposed construction is also not in compliance with 255-410 of the Town Code for protection of towns, beaches, dunes, bluffs, wetland marshes, and other coastal resources. I just wanted to deny this application.
Thank you. Just clarification, do you mean use, or do you mean variances? Or NRSP? Use would refer to.
I don't feel that this meets the standard for natural resources.
Yeah, thank you. Terry?
Okay. Let me spell. Sorry, in sorrow. Yeah, I definitely, I looked at the updates that were given from the agents and the applicants, and they did do slight reductions in many of these features. I think it's not enough. One thing that really jumps out at me is the pool. It was 876 square feet. Basically, what they did was remove the spa, still leaving an 800-square-foot pool. I think that the size of the structure, the scope and the scale of this project is still very large, this area. First of all, before we even go further, this is not 7.8 acres. I think that was a typo in the transcript. It's 54.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, no. It was 7.8 acres?
No, no, I have the size. I have it in my notes.
Yeah, no, the subdivision was at 54,325.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, well, Mr. Brenneman said 7.8. Didn't he say 7.8? Yeah, okay. I think that it's .78 is what it is.
I see. So could this be a typo in the text?
Yeah, I think it was a typo in the transcript, actually. That came out.
Got the numbers right, just moved the decimal.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I just want to clarify that. So the subdivision was 54,000, and there was already a scenic easement of 20,000 square feet on this property. And they were offering additional, an additional 15,594 square feet in the scenic easement. Now, in this hearing also, Brian Locasio stated that the only concern in meeting it is the relevant natural resource here is the dune crest. I feel that the, I know that there are much more natural resources that are relevant for this application than the dune crest. I too went to the property a couple of times, and the dune vegetation there is fantastic. There's bearberry that was even quickly pear growing. It was just a fantastic property. So with all the, I do feel that this does not meet the natural resources special permit standards relative to the size and scope of this project. And it impacts more than the dune crest. It's the dune land vegetation. It's the vegetation that will be destroyed in creating this house at this size. I think it does need to be made scaled down. And the pool in particularly, they should consider a big scale down. But overall, I think this project needs to be scaled back more considerably. Now, it's also impacted to the wildlife. We know there were osprey nests there. They said they would attune to the nesting season, everything. That's all fine. But I think overall that the scale and scope of this project is too large. And for that reason, I'm denying the NRSP.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Member Savarys for her very, very thorough analysis of what went on here in both the hearing and the information we received after that. And Member Berger for also summarizing some of the points that were key to me and my consideration in this. I think we have had several parcels in very recent history to discuss that are adjacent to here, and we've discussed over and over again storm surge, erosion, disappearance of the beachfront. These things that are very volatile and are probably going to continue, as mentioned by Member Savarys, to be volatile over a longer period of time, certainly in the near future. On the other hand, somebody owns a lot, and the town has, it's conditioned to be something that can be built on by an owner, and we have to respect that, that somebody has a right to build on this lot. If in fact we thought that was not the case, we would consider alternate actions that might take that lot off of, you know, out of the buildable status, meaning if it's purchased by the town or some other agency. These are difficult ones for us when we have them, because in respecting the landowner, we also then have to consider what we're basically charged to do here, and that is to look at the variances, to look at the NRSP requirements, and then make a decision about what's best for not only the parcel itself and the environment, what's best for the construction that's going to happen. If the home is built, how much danger is it going to be in, and how short a period of time is the parcel being used correctly? Is it, as has been pointed out by both previous comments here by other members, is the project too large in scope? Should it be less in scope so that it might have an ability to be held in a position that it would be more easily defended against future assaults of various kind of weather conditions, storm surge and things like that? I think it's a very difficult one for me to go through and not realize that the owner did try to make an effort to reduce, but along the lines of what Member Berger said, it was not a great reduction. There was a reduction to show us that they were willing to move, but I think that still, in my mind, a smaller house on this parcel is really required for us to move forward with this. I do believe that they acted in good faith in finding the recommendations of Tyler Borzac and moving the house as far as they could to the south. I think they moved it as close as they could to the neighbor to the west. I think that was done, was also brought back from the dune crest down into the lower spot. And I think that that's to be commended for what was said here and done by the applicant in trying to get this application to move forward. However, given how very sensitive this is, and given what we know to be the volatile nature of the beach, and I think those statistics that were cited here by Member Savarys that was in the TAM about the 63 and 70-foot loss along property lines in 20-year period or 21-year period, are significant factors when we consider what goes on in this extremely sensitive and very volatile part of the town. So while I would encourage the applicant to reconsider how they want to develop this and come back with, to us with a, what we might consider to be a more appropriately-sized project, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to deny this application.
Okay, thank you. So this is, this is one I struggle with, too. I think, as Member Savarys talked about, just looking at the dune land here, I didn't know this area very well. I bike it all the time, so I know every osprey nest. I know every dune. I know, you know, I see it all the time. I think this was one of the landscapes that were an inspiration for the NRSP to begin with. This dune structure, this beach vegetation here is just pristine and spectacular. The other thing going on here is the erosion of the coastline, which is remarkable, since early 2000s, 70 feet on the average has been lost here. It's astounding. What I'm struggling with is the level of development and whether or not that's allowed. I think the arguments you are presenting, all of you, and Mr. Brenneman as well, what I'm struggling with is at what point is size matter or not matter? Here, you know, you have similar development right next door to the west where you have a house of similar development size is developed. I'm struggling to say that this would not be allowed, because of what? What has changed? Has the coastline changed it? Is?
And the house you're referencing was built in 2001. And I don't think back then we were as knowledgeable about.
I agree. I'm disagreeing with you.
Erosion, you know, in terms of the damage in the area.
My struggle is that what are you going to allow? 1,000 square foot? Are you looking at 2,000 square foot? I think that's almost objective at this, to some degree, as well as in this argument. I was leaning towards approving it based on their pullback and based on the fact that the owner does have a right to develop this property. I struggle with how to limit the size in this case. For me, it doesn't hold, it's, there's, it's a stretch to say that this is in keeping with the neighborhood as well, right? With the site, with what's been built there. I was, I think I'm going to stay, and it's fine, it's going to get denied, but I think I'll stay with my original saying that I would approve it as much as, this is a problem. This is a problem lot. There's no doubt about it. It's a problem, you know?
Well, they have, I think.
Resiliency is a problem, you know, the problem here, which you brought up, is like, the size, make it more resilient? No, it's how you construct it's going to make it more resilient, too. And we have to address that, too, but.
And I think, too, Mr. Locasio's statement of, we are going to be seeing, you know, these kind of applications. That was one of the things he said during the hearing that I found to be very, that's what I pondered about the most, like, he is correct, because we're going to be looking at these very delicate, sensitive areas. And the question will be, different alternatives to size, you know? The size of the, it's not necessarily a house, a lot, they're going to accommodate a big house like that. And they seem to want everything, the spot. I'm not going to rebuild, you know, I'm not going to do this project for them, but there are certainly alternatives and different ways of approaching it because of the sensitivity, I believe, of this lot.
And in 2000, early 2000s, if this was with the time the neighboring property was approved, this would have been approved.
Correct. No, it would have been.
It would have been.
But knowing what we know now.
Yeah. I think that's an important point.
It's an important point, right?
Important point is that knowing what we know now, it's the character.
We have history to what has happened.
I think, I think the board here is going to be facing a lot of decisions. And I'm against it. And we're going to face this over and over again, not just in these kinds of locations and other ones. Low-lying areas, erosion, what size development? And I'm not that convinced that previous development should have an influence on our decisions right now. I agree 100% that the house next door is a similar-sized development. I don't know if it came in front of us now, though, if we would consider approving it. And I think what we're dealing with right now is not what got approved in 2001. And I think we've seen some very dramatic movement here, and I think we're just reacting to it. But I will say, in respect for the two positive approvals, is that I don't think this is an easy decision for any of us. I think that I want to respect that. You have to respect the investment the homeowner's made, both in the property and then the effort he's made to do a legitimate job of coming in front of this board with a reasonable application. So it's not an unreasonable effort on the part of the applicant. It's a difficult situation that we have to find ways to deal with. And you can see by the split vote here that we're all back and forth struggling with it, but.
There are applications that we, you know, the board has denied, and from an NRSP standard, from an NRSP point, where maybe a dune, we were trying to protect the main dune or something like that. We wanted to see the house pulled off the main dune. I, for me, I don't see how we can pull a house, the house is pulled back as far as making it a little smaller. Does that help it out much or not? I don't know. I struggle with that. That's where, that's where I am with it, but.
I mean, the dune, the dune itself is 10-foot elevation.
Right.
Yeah. I mean.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel?
So, you're still.
I'm still in approval.
Still in approval? Okay.
That concludes our post-hearing decisions. Finished with the doosie. Those are tough.
Oh, we have resolution?
We need some resolution. Michael O'Connell, 97 South Essex, Montauk.
Minutes?
Oh, that's mine.
Oh, we got the minutes. March 22nd.
They're hiding up there. Is somebody over there? It's Mark.
Thank you. Wait, that stuff.
Okay. Minutes look good to me. So I will make a motion for, to approve the minutes, the draft minutes of March 22nd, 2022, for the East Hampton Town zoning board of appeals.
I'll second it.
I concur.
I concur as well. All right, now, Michael O'Connell, that's 97 South Essex. That was approved.
It was approved, it was a unanimous approval.
I abstained.
No, I'm sorry. You abstained.
I abstained.
I'll last abstain.
We'll be out of that.
Oh, okay.
So you recall this is a business property for a retail shop on the corner of South Essex Street and South Euclid. And this was a, for, for member approval, with Member Savarys abstaining on the decision. So I do make a motion to approve, not to approve, to accept the resolution. What am I doing? Approved it yet or?
You're going to make a motion to accept the determination.
To accept the determination as written. Thank you. To adopt the resolution as written for Michael O'Connell at 97 South Essex Street in Montauk, tax map 300-049-1-13.2.
I concur.
I concur.
It's hard to remember to say those words.
I've been sitting down there for 30 years.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Roy seconded it.
Roy, I was keeping up.
Roy seconded.
Question mark, but I'll take the second.
Okay.
We have Robin Diament at 91 Napig Harbor Road in Amagansett. This was a modification. Was this Tim? Or, I mean, I can, I'd be happy to make a motion on that.
Diament is-- I have it as Chairman Deli.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this was a modification. It was a unanimous decision, so therefore I make a motion in Robin Diament, 91 Napig Harbor Road, Amagansett, Suffolk, tax map number 300-110-2-1, to approve the modification as written.
I'll second that.
I'll concur.
I concur.
Okay, next we have Frank Davis at 42 Captain Kidd's Path in Montauk.
So counsel wanted to have a discussion on this, or do you not?
Yeah. I don't want you to have a discussion. I just know that the applicant agent, who is Dan Michaels, the architect, had called in with some concern about some discussion during the work session about whether or not the applicant had agreed to covenant not to enclose or convert to living space any portions of the decking. There, up to the board, of course, whether that goes into the resolution or whether it stays out of the resolution. So we'll hear from the board on that. I do have Member Brennaman give way in on that. His vote was to leave it out.
Okay. Well, I feel we should leave it in. I believe we have a nexus on this. Originally, in the original approval for this application, the, one of the extensions of the house was to go in that northwest corner, and then with the modification that was done prior to coming to the board, they took that extension and incorporated into extensions on the other side of the house, making a second-story extension in the southeast corner and between the drive, the garage and the house. I feel that, and at the hearing, the applicant, the agent did say that he thought it wouldn't be an issue for the homeowner, and I don't know that that's really, you know, that we need the homeowner's approval on that, but I do feel that we should have the covenant for the original portion in the northwest corner of the extension, when it was authorized as an extension, approved as an extension. Now that it's going to be a deck, that they give us the covenant to say it will not be enclosed as become living space.
So I just ask, that's the only portion that you're looking to have--
That's the only portion. And I don't know, there's a whole lot of other decking, but because that was an extension, now it's a decking, so I'd like them to covenant that that will remain as such.
Yeah, well, I would agree for just that portion of it. I think that the intent was that once it switched from one to another and they moved the square area to another part of the property, we don't want to give the option that that could at some point be enclosed and become an addition that sort of grandfathered in in some way, or could be thought to be grandfathered in some way. When we put a covenant on it saying that they cannot develop a porch or a patio area, that's what our intention is, to look forward to the future. And for me, I'm, I'm happy to leave it in for the portion that was previously approved to be an addition.
I agree with my fellow board members.
I didn't think it was, I didn't think we did have a nexus for this because they improved the conditions on the overall property. Interesting. I still don't think there's, to me, there's, being the fact that they, they modified it, there's zoning boards in the, in the future that can handle it. I think it's a stretch to, to request that. So I, I would, I would vote that it goes out, but that's 3-2.
Okay, so you got 3-2, and we'll have the--
So we'll have to modify that or--
We'll have that reflected in the determination on that provision, and I will revise, and we will adopt it.
Okay, we have enough time for that?
Not now, because they asked us to consider this.
Okay. Good point, good point.
They asked.
Okay, finally, we have Nicholas Gregory at 15 Shore Road, Amagansett, Suffolk, tax map number 300-131-06-116. Counsel, maybe you want to just introduce us again for us for the record?
Sure. So this is a rare thing that happens with this board, and this is a resolution to suspend a determination pending a rehearing. And this was, as the board discussed last time, because of an issue that was raised in terms of whether the neighbor was properly noticed, but perhaps more importantly, the location of the sanitary in proximity to an existing well that even the county didn't know was there. They believed the applicant was hooked up to town water. As I presented to the board, I've received information from both the applicant's agent, the neighbor, and Suffolk County Department of Health Services, confirming this is all true. Pleased to report that the neighbor and the applicant are trying to resolve this by hooking him up to town water. We feel that the board felt that having a rehearing would not only address the sanitary issue when it comes time to resolve that, or when they've resolved it, you can come back before the board. It also will satisfy notice because, as we know, rehearing allows the neighbors to comment. So we directed this resolution that suspends the amended determination pending the hearing, and I would ask the board for its adoption, so please sit.
Wants to make a motion.
Go ahead, Terry.
I don't even remember what you just said.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to, for Nicholas Gregory at 15 Shore Road in Amagansett, Suffolk, tax map number 300-131-06-16, to accept the suspension of, of the determination as written.
You would, you said, a motion to adopt the resolution suspending amended determination pending rehearing.
Okay, Eben.
Eben, got it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, okay. I'll concur.
I concur.
Thank you.
That's why I didn't want to say that, that motion.
Great.
Thank you. With that, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. I forgot what the motion was. You have to make a motion to--
I think we'll all agree on this.
Yeah. End the East Hampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of April 5th, 2022, at 9:07 PM.
Second.
I concur.
I concur.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Laney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.